All right, is everybody ready to go?
Yes, Madam Chair.
We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We're going to start with a moment of silent reflection for first responders and members of the armed forces, followed by an invocation by Pastor Chris Drennan from Grace Baptist Church. That will be followed by the pledge of allegiance by myself. Everybody would please rise.
Let's pray. Our gracious Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us. You've given us life, health, and strength that we can come together to do the duties that you have set before us. We thank you that you continue to care for us and provide for us. Lord, we do come to you with prayers upon our hearts for those in the upcoming storm. We pray for your protection. Watch care over our fellow Floridians. And Lord, that you would have mercy and compassion upon them and upon us as well, Lord. We pray for our first responders as they are in the midst of the storm, helping and taking care of folks for the linemen that will provide the electricity and all those who will be involved in the cleanup. We pray for our nation, Lord. We pray that you would help us in the midst of turmoil and chaos. And, Lord, that you would just provide leadership for us. We pray for this commission and for their meeting today, that you'll give wisdom and guidance in the matters before them. And, Lord, that they would lead us in truth and righteousness. Lord, that we would just see our county continue to thrive. And, Lord, we just pray that you will work in a mighty way. So watch over and protect us, we pray, and ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, commissioners, before we get started, I just have a few storm-related announcements I want to go over. As you guys know, Hurricane Milton is very large and ever-changing in our area, so I thought it would be good to give everybody kind of an update. The county administrator signed the state of emergency for Indian River County effective at 5:00 PM last night. The EOC will go to essential crew activation at 2:00 PM today and full activation on Wednesday morning at 8:00 AM. There is an information line available for the public with any questions they may have, and that's 1-800-226-4000. General population shelters will open at 2:00 PM today. They are located at Oslo Middle School, Sebastian River Middle School, Felsmer Elementary, and Freshman Learning Center, which is also our pet-friendly shelter. That information is also on our website. Tomorrow at 8:30 AM, the special need shelter located at Treasure Coast Elementary will be open. The landfill is open today, and the Felsmer and Oslo customer convenience centers are open Wednesday and Thursday. All convenience centers and the landfill will be closed. Residential waste and recycling will be suspended. Residential waste and recycling is running as normal today. The fee has been waived at the landfill, the way fee has been waived due to Hurricane Milton to facilitate pre-storm debris removal. So if you are removing debris, please, please take that down. We've suspended that. Once we get through the storm, the landfill will reopen, and Roseland, Gifford, and Winter Beach convenience centers will be open, and we will resume residential and recycling service as quickly as possible with a one-day delay in service. The last thing for everybody, at 1:30 today, there will be a press conference at the EOC, and the sound has been adjusted and addressed, so everybody will be able to hear that. So I know there were some concerns with the one yesterday, so that has been fixed. 1:30, we'll have more information, so please tune into that press conference. But I did want to give that update for the residents and for the commissioners. So if there's no questions on that, we will move on to our agenda. Commissioners, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Nope?
Madam Chair, move approval?
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With that, we will move on to proclamations and presentations. We have a presentation or proclamation declaring the month of October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This will be presented by Commissioner Flesher to Jennifer Fox and, oh, come on down, and the crew.
We have a team.
You're all welcome to come on.
All come on down. Thank you, Madam Chair, and appreciate the opportunity. This is one of those proclamations that I wish we did not have to present, but the challenge exists, and that's why the team is here, and that's why we're doing this presentation. You know, a few of us have been involved with domestic violence for many years, on the right side of domestic violence. So we know a lot of things, signs and symptoms, and, you know, when we contact individuals. It's not always the black eye. It's not always the swollen cheeks. It's not always what's apparent, what we see. So I'm in hopes that you would share some of the signs and symptoms that other people can help, because it's everyone's business, because a victim of domestic violence does not, is not compelled to reach out for help until oftentimes it's too late or at the end of this tragic trail. So I just hope that you had some information for individuals so they can help each other and through the process. With that, I'll present the proclamation declaring the month of October 2024 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a pervasive issue that transcends all ethnic, racial, and socioeconomic boundaries, it is a pattern of behavior involving physical, emotional, sexual, and economic abuse perpetrated by an intimate partner. And whereas domestic violence is a crime with far-reaching consequences affecting victims of all genders, sexual orientations, and socioeconomic backgrounds. And whereas the home, a place intended for the sanctuary, is often the site of domestic violence, making it a hidden crime and devastating impact on individuals, families, and communities. And whereas October is designated as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month to raise awareness about this critical issue, encourage prevention efforts, and support survivors. And whereas it is essential to acknowledge the courage of survivors who break the cycle of abuse and seek help, and to commend the dedicated professionals who provide the support and the services to victims. Indian River County is committed to creating a safe and supportive environment for all residents and working collaboratively for the community with partners and to prevent domestic violence and provide support to survivors. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that we recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and express our sincere appreciation for those committed to promoting peace and preventing domestic violence in our community. Duly adopted this eighth day of October 2024, and is hereby signed by all five county commissioners. Good morning.
Good morning. So thank you for allowing us to do this today. So I'm Jennifer Fox, the CEO of Safe Space. We are the state-certified domestic violence center on the Treasure Coast. And on behalf of Safe Space, we do want to thank you for proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. As you can imagine, this month, we've got our team out doing a lot of work to make sure that people know that domestic violence exists, that it's happening in Indian River County, and that we want to make sure that people understand where they can go for help if they need it. So that's a lot of the work that we're doing this month especially. I mean, we're doing this all year, of course, but we're averaging about 250 crisis phone calls every month on our crisis line, and those are just the people who are reaching out for help, of course. Sometimes that's friends and family. Sometimes it's the person themselves. So that number is available for anybody if they just need some help figuring out what to do next, what are the next steps. We have really noticed a big uptick, about 25% increase in calls from law enforcement and DCF, child protection, over the last three or four months. And we are kind of expecting this trend to continue. So we are really trying to figure out what's going on, what's happening. Is law enforcement getting better at giving us the calls, giving the referrals, or is there more happening in our area? So we're just keeping an eye on it and trying to watch what's going on and see how we can best help. Safe Space is really known for its emergency shelter, but we do provide a lot of other wraparound services, and I think that's important for people to recognize as well. So each person that works with us has a personal advocate that's dedicated to them, helping them with safety plans, finding safe housing, helping them. We've got peer support groups that they can attend. They can help with counseling, finding those basic needs that they need. We also have our highly-trained legal team that helps with injunctions for protections and other advice. We have co-located advocates working directly with child protection. And then we've got an advocate who works specifically on financial education, helping get the budget put together, understanding credit, and then helping them find opportunities for increased education if they want that. So if we don't offer a service, we're really trying to work with the community partners to make sure that everybody's got that community safety net, wraparound services throughout the whole community. We do have a really great relationship and really thankful for the sheriff and sheriff's department here in Indian River County. The victim advocates work really closely with Safe Space. It's been a great relationship, and we're excited to continue that. I've been in this position for just over a year now, and one of the things I hear quite a bit is that people that need our services don't know that Safe Space exists. And so the next couple of years, our real goal is to increase our impact. And that includes things like community education, which will include that prevention work, increasing our staffing and advocacy capacity. We want to make sure we've got advocates ready for the increased volume. And we also want to help build those really trusting and lasting relationships with community partners and other community leaders. So I'll be reaching out to each of you in the next few months here. I'd like to have some conversations with commissioners as well. But we will be doing more awareness events in this area, as well as some fundraising events. I did want to mention that this is the first time in 12 years we will not be doing the Walk a Mile in Hersheus campaign. Instead, this month, we're having our second annual amethyst gala, which will be at the Tesoro Club, October 18th. So if anybody has any questions about Safe Space or any of the ways to become involved in the movement or want to donate, you can always visit our website at safespacefl.org, and we'll get back to you soon as we can. So thank you again for your support and for proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Well, thank you. Once again, there is a high cost in doing this operations for Safe Space, and you accept donations. There is a lot of different things that are in need, sundries, and just materials to keep on moving forward to helping those who are victims of domestic violence.
Yeah.
So how can people help that are watching or listening?
Of course, money always is very helpful. We do in-kind donations, of course, are helpful as well. So we, basic needs, we go through quickly, right? The shampoo, conditioners, basic needs for people in the shelter and people that may not need shelter, but they still need our help. So those types of things are great. Linens for the beds, towels, we go through things, pillows, anything that you might need in your home, we have at the shelter, and then people need that when they're relocating or, you know, moving into their own home. So those types of things are really important. Diapers, of course, things for babies and young kids are important, too. Those are the main, basic need things. And then, you know, we need, of course, bigger things. We need new bunk beds. We need new dressers. But those types of things, and then just becoming involved and understanding and learning more about what domestic violence is and when it happens, you know, is happening in our area. And just kind of being that sounding board for someone. People aren't always ready to leave right away. There's a lot of reasons why people will stay. And so we just want to be that support and that person that can listen and help them when they're ready to leave.
So if people want to donate, how do they do that?
Best way would be to either give us a call, and our front desk person knows where to direct those. Oh, what is our actual?
Two, 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 three, two, three, nine, nine.
Come tell. I don't know the number.
Seven, seven, two, 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 three, two, three, nine, nine is our administrative number.
Yep. And also just the website will direct you at safespacefl.org.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I want to ensure that those who want to help can help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to take a photo, too, so.
There's a line in the floor that's in the middle.
She's got to shift over. Thank you again.
Thank you. All right, our next proclamation is a presentation or proclamation designating October 2024 as Manufacturing Month in Indian River County. This will be read by myself and presented to Helene and other members of the chamber. Welcome. All right, this is a proclamation designating October 2024 as Manufacturing Month in Indian River County, Florida. Whereas the National Manufacturing Institute has designated October 4th, 2024, as National Manufacturing Day. A kickoff to Manufacturing Month, recognizing the manufacturing industry is vital to the economic health of our county, the state of Florida, and our entire country. And whereas manufacturing is one of the cornerstones of our local economy, helping to sustain our quality of life while fostering a solid and diverse tax base in Indian River County. And whereas Manufacturing Month is a tremendous opportunity to shift perceptions in a positive direction regarding this industry while diversifying and bolstering our local economy. And whereas manufacturing provides 2,700 high-wage and high-skill jobs in Indian River County with 146 manufacturing firms paying an average annual wage of $60,070, higher than our current average wage of $54,317. This equates to over $162 million in paychecks circulating throughout our local economy each year by the manufacturing industry alone. And whereas we join the Indian River County Chamber of Commerce, the Treasure Coast Manufacturers Association, our school district, our business community, and many volunteers in supporting our manufacturing boot camp program, which introduces high school students and young adults to potential careers in manufacturing, thus strengthening our workforce pipeline. And whereas, all residents are encouraged to take time to acknowledge Indian River County manufacturers and their employees for the positive economic impact they have in our county, the state of Florida, and our nation. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the month of October 2024 be designated as Manufacturing Month in Indian River County, adopted this eighth day of October 2024 and signed by all five county commissioners. Helene, it's good to see you. Do you want to tell us a little bit about what you guys have going on for Manufacturing Month this year?
Sure, sure. Thank you. For the record, Helene Castle Tyne, I'm the Economic Development Vice President with the Indian River County Chamber of Commerce, and thank you for giving us a few minutes on your agenda this morning. As far as events go, this is it. This is it, so. But we do have other events scheduled probably later in the year, tours for our counselors and our teachers at the high schools, but that probably won't be until early next year. So more to come on that. But I would like to thank you for joining us in recognizing the importance of manufacturing here in Indian River County. We join hundreds of other chambers of commerce across Florida, across the country, highlighting the positive impact that this industry has on our local communities. In Indian River County, as you may know, we have a diverse range of manufacturing here, from airplanes to orange juice, from boats to beer. Manufacturing is entwined in our everyday lives, and it's an essential part of our economy. And, and this is a big "and," today's manufacturing environment is highly technical. It includes robotics, automated machinery, screen technologies. It's not that dark and dirty atmosphere that we all picture from like the early 1940s and 50s. It's way different today. So we want everyone in our area to know how manufacturing drives our local economy. It helps to balance out that three-legged stool that we have, agriculture, tourism, and industry. Economic diversification is key. So thank you again for joining us in recognizing Manufacturing Month in Indian River County. And I do have one of our manufacturing boot camp committee members, Teri Graal, who's with Career Source Research Coast. She's with me here today. I did have other people who were going to be here today, but they're at home getting ready for the storm.
That's very understandable, Helene.
Absolutely.
No worries.
Absolutely. So anyway, so thank you very much for joining us in this important recognition. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for what you guys do with manufacturing in the county.
Take your own picture?
It's locked. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Best team in the state.
It's not hard to do this year. All right. Our next proclamation, or our next is presentation of proclamation recognizing the month of October 2024 as Cyber Security Awareness Month in Indian River County. This will be presented by Commissioner Ehrman to the IT department. Welcome, guys. We appreciate what you guys are doing to keep us secure.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I appreciate you letting me read this because, you know, like most of us up here, I think we're all just so computer savvy, it's scary, right?
Totally. We are definitely not the high maintenance department for the IT guys.
I love this cyber stuff, but I hate this cyber stuff. So let me have a conversation for just a second to say that passwords rule my life. I have a book this thick of all my passwords. I'm learning how to get better at using.
You're not supposed to write them down. That's not a cyber secure.
There's no way I can remember them all. And I'm not used to.
You shouldn't announce it.
Putting all the bags in one basket. So they're at home in a safe place, and nobody probably could read them anyways, but.
Rachel's.
I understand how important, how important it is in security because in this day and age now, with everything we do online and everything we do in our computer servers, everything. I mean, all the way from the United States government down to somebody's house, how important it is and what's going on. I'm sure that, that, I'm sure that Commissioner Law, Commissioner Fleischer, you never ever thought about cyber crimes. You couldn't spell the word hardly, I'm sure. I know I couldn't. Who would have ever thought? But, but it's a real thing in this country, and it's so important. I mean, I used to read every day the headlines of companies, agencies, government agencies being held for ransom on their stuff. I mean, it can happen here. And I think with our county staff, I think they're doing a great job. And when I hear the same with the constitutionals. But it's a very frustrating, but yet it's so very much a part of our life and so very needed. And, and we definitely appreciate what y'all do and what all the cyber professionals that are in the business for good and not as cyber criminals, I appreciate what they do. So with that, I'm going to read the proclamation. It's a proclamation recognizing the month of October 2024 as Cyber Security Awareness Month in Indian River County, Florida. Whereas, Cyber Security Awareness Month was established in 2004 through a collaborative effort between the United States Department of Homeland Security and the National Cyber Security Alliance to ensure that every American has the resources they need to stay safer and more secure online. And whereas, the rapid development of technology has greatly benefited our county, providing countless opportunities for communication, business, and innovation. And with the increasing use of digital tools and systems comes the ever-growing risk of cyber threats, including data breaches, identity theft, and cyber attacks, which can have serious and far-reaching consequences for individuals, organizations, and communities. And whereas, cybersecurity awareness is essential to safeguarding sensitive information, protecting privacy, and ensuring the security of the county's digital infrastructure. And a concerted effort is needed to educate and empower all citizens, business, and government entities to take proactive steps toward preventing cyber threats by implementing sound security practices and adopting modern cybersecurity measures. Whereas, the United States Department of Homeland Security and the National Cyber Security Alliance have designated October as National Cyber Security Awareness Month to raise awareness about the importance of cybersecurity for all individuals. And whereas, by increasing awareness of cybersecurity practices such as using secure authentication methods, recognizing phishing scams, securing networks, we can collectively reduce the risk of cyber threats and promote a safe, more secure digital environment. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the month of October 2024 be designated as Cyber Security Awareness Month in Indian River County. And the Board encourages all citizens to take action in improving cybersecurity preparedness and resilience. Adopted this eighth day of October 2024 and signed by all five county commissioners. Again, to Rachel and Zach, thanks for all y'all do. For us, for the county, it's most appreciative. And, you know, it's a shame that we have to fight the worst criminals in the world, somebody that's definitely premeditated the cybersecurity and all that stuff. But again, I appreciate what y'all do, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Want to give us any tidbits on cybersecurity and not hiding your passwords under your keyboard? That's number one.
Definitely don't hide passwords under keyboards. Keeping it in a book actually at home isn't actually all that insecure either. But don't tell people where you keep that book. Do keep it to yourself. But yes, we're always constantly working. Thank you, everyone, for allowing us to come up here and talk for a few minutes and making the proclamation. Obviously, we're always working very hard in IT to keep everybody safe. But it's a tough job to keep everyone educated. And that's the most important part, is having everybody aware of the challenges that are out there. You know, everyone here is aware of the types of campaigns that we have going on regularly and continuously. We're always working hard to improve. We're very thankful that this year we are able to double our cybersecurity team from one person to two. So the commission is very much taking cybersecurity seriously, and we're very thankful for that. And we're always working hard to improve everything. We're going through exercises regularly and audits. Rachel works very hard on keeping everything up to date as well as following up on everybody, making sure that anything that is needed is on a needed basis and not granted to anybody frequently. And we do audits of our own systems, keeping them secure. But the biggest challenge, of course, for the greater community of Indian River County is education. And knowing and recognizing part of the proclamation is recognizing phishing scams. And perhaps that's the thing that is plaguing most people. You would think that the most lucrative scheme out there would be to attack governments and ransomwares, but it's actually, you know, just making a cold phone call to a person who's willing to believe that you work for Microsoft and selling them services that they don't ever actually receive. So education and recognition are by far the most important parts of cybersecurity. And obviously, the technical sides of it, we take care of. And that's not necessarily easy either. But there are far more non-cybersecurity people than there are cybersecurity people. So we're all constantly working to work together. We want to make things both easy and secure. Because if something's not easy, then it's very easy to make it not secure. Like I said, writing down passwords, that can be bad. But if it's in a book at your house, it's not so bad. If it's on your monitor at work, it's not so great.
The sticky note, that's not, that's not good practice, right?
So, but we do want to make things easy so that you don't resort to, that our users don't resort to tasks like that. So we're always working harder, and we're always open to any type of suggestions or requests, asks, critiques, anything that we can do to make things both easier and more secure. Typically, if we can do both at the same time, that's the best. But thank you, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good morning. Good to see you.
I got an authentication code.
Good to see you. Exclamation point.
Jimmy Fallon's spot.
There we go. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners. Next item is approval of the minutes for the Budget Workshop of July 10th, a special call meeting of August 8th, and the Utility Rate Study Workshop of August 22nd.
Madam Chair, move approval, all three.
All right. I'll be happy to second that. Motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. With that, we'll move on to information item. No, there are no information items. We'll move on to the consent. I know that was very quick, wasn't it? We'll move on to the consent agenda. Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent? Yes, Commissioner Moss.
A G H I.
The three. G.
G H.
And I. Three in a row. Okay. Anybody else? Anybody from the public wishing to pull anything? All right. Seeing none, commissioners.
Madam Chair, move approval as amended.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. With that, we will move on. Commissioner Moss, eight G.
And thank you. Actually, this whole group is about the same topic, and that's cell tower revenue. Eight G reflects the contract with Singular, and that is valued at $84,000 annually. It's a 10-year agreement. The previous contract expired March of this year. Eight H is Metro PCS. That's $59,400 annually. That commenced in 2005, and this is the First Amendment. And eight I is T-Mobile, and that represents $58,200 annually. That commenced in 2004. The Second Amendment was in 2017, and this is the Third Amendment. So really, I have, I guess, two basic questions. I'm looking to understand how the, how the revenue is determined, who negotiates this, and, you know, how it's determined over time because these contracts began at different times. And also, the length of time that that contract runs. You know, it seems to vary quite a bit. In fact, I'm not even sure of the length of time of the. The first one appears to be a 10-year agreement. That's eight G, which is Singular. Eight H, Metro PCS. This is the First Amendment. I'm not sure how long it goes. And eight I, which is T-Mobile, is the Third Amendment. So I'm just looking to understand it better.
Yes, ma'am. And Chris Six, county attorney, or Assistant County Attorney, these agreements are negotiated with a contractor named Steep Steel, and they're professionals and experts in this field. And so they have a standard, and unfortunately, I don't have the information of exactly what he uses, but we use his expertise to negotiate all the towers. And he does all of them in the county, and he's been in the business, I believe, it's over 20 years. They make sure that they match what is the current rate for the individual towers. Like, each tower is different based upon the height and the availability. I know, I don't know if Zach understands that better than I do, but based upon the range that they can get out of it and the number of connections they can make based upon it. For instance, the Gifford Tower, which is the T-Mobile one, currently has to have less equipment on it because it's in need of structural repair. They've actually included in that contract $100,000 towards the repair and reconstruction of that tower, so they can include more equipment, so we can actually add more towers or more connections to that tower as well. And so it's negotiated through the industry standards of based upon the area and what the carriers are getting from other areas around us.
So is there then a set schedule for, you know, based on however many connections the tower enables? That's what the price is? Or is each one negotiated separately? How much, how much negotiation is there? I guess that's what I'm wondering.
Each one's negotiated differently, and it's based upon the context. I know the man's name is James Kennedy, who is our contact for it. He is the owner of Steep Steel. He negotiates with them constantly. He's talking with them. And some of these agreements weren't actually up yet, but it was time for us to get more money than we are currently getting. They agreed to it, and they went back and forth. And part of that negotiation is currently, speaking of the Gifford Tower again, an agreement that's not on here is the Verizon Agreement, which is not due yet. He negotiated with them $150,000 towards that upgrade to the Gifford Tower and help repair it. And so he's, he's constantly working. I speak to him a couple of times a week about different towers. These were the first ones to get finalized. It's just a constant market rate based upon the market rate plus the value of the land and all those things that get involved in it. I don't know the exact numbers of it because that's why we hire him and let him deal with that. But it is a consistent effort that he has, speaking with the tower companies. And they were all, on these, they've been in contact with him weekly to make sure if they needed any more information for us or anything like that. And we can get more if you'd like it. I can, we'd be happy to contact them individually and have them send more of the details of how he negotiates with them.
Well, you feel confident that we're maximizing the revenue from these towers? That's, you know, that's my concern, that we're maximizing the revenue.
Yes, ma'am, I do, based upon my conversations with Mr. Kennedy, as well as some of the upcoming ones and knowing what he's doing for those. I can, he's explained it to me, and we've spent hours on the phone in the past couple of months going over the upcoming ones. And I do feel confident that he's done everything he can do to get the maximum value for the county. He's even said sometimes it's not worth renewing them if there's something. He said, there's a couple of them. We need to look at other options. He's not in it for the money, or he's making money, obviously, but he's not getting more money by talking to me more. He's taking care of us, and it seems like a very valuable relationship with him.
All right. Well, thank you for the explanation.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll move to approve them then. Eight G, eight H, and eight I.
All right. I'll be happy. Go ahead. Commissioner Fleischer will second all three. So we have a motion by Commissioner Moss for eight G, H, and I, with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. If there's no further discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. With that, we will move on to our public hearing. So public hearing is an ordinance of Indian River County, Florida, amending the zoning ordinance and the accompanying zoning map for approximately 7.97 acres from CG, General Commercial District, to MED, Medical District. Welcome.
Good morning, Chris Walter, Planning and Development Services Director.
That was just quasi-traditional, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, hold on. We got to go through our checklist. All right, commissioners, before we open the public hearing, I'm going to ask everybody to disclose any ex parte communications, site visits, or independent investigations. Commissioner Moss.
None.
Commissioner Ehrman. None for me?
None, none whatsoever, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Law?
None.
And then I will need you guys to confirm that the commissioners, that you guys have an open mind and are able to base your decision on the evidence presented in applicable law. Commissioner Moss?
Cannon Shell.
Cannon Will.
Cannon Will.
Cannon Will.
All right. At this time, we're going to open the public hearing. Anybody that's going to be providing information, will you please stand to be sworn in by the clerk?
Do you swear? Or would you tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. With that, we will move on to staff's presentation. Welcome, Chris.
Good morning. The applicant is actually asked to continue this case
Oh.
to the Tuesday, November 19th, 9:00 a.m. County Commission meeting.
Okay.
Madam Chair, that's, I'm glad that you did open the public hearing because that would be needed anyways for us to open and then to continue for the next commission meeting. So thank you for doing that.
All right. Well, my questions were not wasted then. So that is fabulous. All right, commissioners, our request is to continue the meeting. So what we would need at this time would just be a motion to continue until October 19th.
Madam Chair, move, move to continue.
Oh, November 19th, I'm sorry.
November 19th at 9:00 a.m.
Fantastic.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Our next item is a request to speak by Mr. Wooton regarding metal detectors and planned lawful concealed carry harassment at the Firefighters' County Fair. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Robert Wooton. I live in unincorporated Indian River County, just north of Felsmere. And as a retired military officer, I like you sworn up to support and defend the Constitution, and that's why I'm here, asking for some support today. On the evening of the 19th of September, at the Indian River County Youth, Livestock, and Horticultural Meeting, a discussion was held regarding the Firefighters' Fair. Their plan includes harassing law-abiding citizens that choose to lawfully carry at the fair. Their plan includes metal detectors at the entrance and baggage checks. If a concealed carry weapon is found, then the person with the weapon would be taken to a tent where deputies will do an immediate background check, even if they hold a valid concealed carry weapons permit. If the background check is successful, then the person is allowed to enter the fair. And that's why I say it's harassment. What are we trying to stop? The four H participants will have to raise funds to pay for a metal detector on the barn gate entrance. If the participants don't come up with the funds to pay for the rental of the metal detector and to pay the security guard, then we've been informed that we'll all have to go through the main entrance. And everyone here who's had their home children show at the fair know that it would be ludicrous to have to drag all your animal feed and all the crock pots and everything that everybody does every night at the fair. This planned action violates Florida Statute 7933, which deals with fire and law preemption at the state level and the Fourth Amendment to the Constitution. Anyone who. The fair does not qualify as a place where you are not allowed to carry under 79033. This facility is, and I didn't walk through a metal detector to get in here. So I don't know why I would have to do it at the fair. I request the County Commission adopt a resolution codifying the right to fully concealed carry at the county on any county-owned property. My hope is such a simple, plainly worded resolution would squash this illegal plan that has been hatched to, to do this at the fair. If passing through metal detectors and bag checks are required to gain access to the fair, I will seek a court-ordered injunction to stop these actions, which could cost our county funds for my attorney fees and damages if I'm successful in accordance with 79033 subsection F. Furthermore, public employees acting under the color of law, Statute 79033, subsection 3E, are subject to employment termination. Our firefighters and deputies should be put on notice regarding the violations of 79033 and not jeopardize their careers over a clearly illegal endeavor. We all know that concealed carry has occurred at the fair for decades. And I don't think any of us can remember an issue where a lawful abiding citizen caused any problems. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, our next item is a request to speak from Mr. Rigby regarding federal and state funding. Welcome, Mr. Rigby.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Bill Rigby. I reside at 8465 Fifth Ninth Avenue, Orbison, Florida. I'm here this morning before you this morning on the fairness. I come before, let me start up. I come this morning for this commission today in the spirit of fairness and a unified application of the law. I won't go into U.S. Constitution 42 this morning. I'm just gonna start right off. In my presentation, in 1992, an interlocal agreement was signed. And through that, two haulers negotiated to collect recycling and trash in Indian River County. I'm going through this step, and I'm gonna get to my point, what I'm here for today. One recycled collection service, or integrated into the county's revenue stream, state and federal laws ensure that minority-owned business and disabled veteran-owned business benefit from same revenue as other haulers. However, I stand to bring attention to a critical issue of Indian River County. By its admission, by claim, it does not actually participate in awarding contracts to minority-owned or disabled veteran businesses and their collection services. At this time, I request this commission to write such a statement. If the claim is accurate, I would be more than willing to send that statement to the state and federal agencies that provide grants and funding these operations. Madam Chair, I'm gonna bring something to your attention again. I think I stated about three weeks ago. I'm bringing it back to your attention again. You have stated confidently that the RFP contract with Waste Management is sound. I respectfully ask if you and this commission will stand by statement. By statement, if you do, that in need, I mean, estimation as to why this RFP was purposely excluded the legal requirements for minority-owned and disabled-owned businesses to participate in these contracts. Federal and state grant language requests these inclusion and excluding these them goes against the laws and principles of fairness. The interloc agreement signed in 1992 could last for 30 years or more. At that time, the county initially agreed to negotiate with Waste Management, which was Harris, and Trezecos, which was Republic. I'm not sure since these, there are no minutes, but it appears that this agreement intends to keep those haulers as the own haulers under this agreement. But recycling was added, and the same deal afforded these haulers must be afforded to minority-owned and disabled veteran-owned businesses for 30 years or more through negotiations. There are two companies had no legal right to monopolize the recycling collection program. However, the county created a barrier to entry, and these companies that have barriers to entry receive greater profit margins than those that do not have barriers to entry. I want to address an issue. I'm going back in time a little bit till I get to my issue. I'm gonna get to my issue in a few minutes. I'm going back in time a little bit. I want to address an issue with the city of Sebastian, with Trezecos, which is now Republic, and Waste Man, and Harris. Capital Sanitation was unjustly barred from operating there for reasons that I believe that was discriminatory. While Trezecos, Republic was allowed to place a commercial container illegally, capital lost funding and went through three city Sebastian managers before Mr. Mena received, removed them from the premises. This action shows that the county is the custodian of this contract and not Waste Management or Trezecos or Republic. We reviewed this issue with multiple city managers before finally addressing it. Yet the city of Sebastian still owes Capital Sanitation money for illegal acts. And I'm owed compensation from the recycling collection program for the past 20 years plus. I would like to know why the county allowed this to continue and did nothing to rectify this situation while taking such rapt action in other cases. Number one, like the Liberty Park CDD project. While the developer was just given seven days to present a plan over a 14-year project, you approved that. Furthermore, the county allowed the Health Department to break our lease, to which they were not even part of the lease, days of hope, which was locked us out several times. And this...
I'm not trying to interrupt you, Mr. Rigby, but there's a lot of issues included in this, and I thought you were talking about federal and state.
I'm gonna get to the federal funding.
Okay.
I'm gonna get to that.
Okay.
This, I said in my meeting, in this presentation, I was gonna go back a little bit and then come back to where I need to be. All this is intertwined together.
Okay.
If you're bad with me. I'm all over the place, but I'm gonna come to the place. Trust me, I am. Okay, now, there's no paperwork stating that that was a problem, but you used your power to break the law. I'm moving to where I need to be at now.
Okay.
But West Sebastian, President Lee, has been out of business for almost two years under the pretense of the Health Department, County, County Commission. But yet Gifford is allowed to have a candidate at their county building, and they don't have to have paid insurance or anything. Now, I'm gonna get to the valid point of where I need to be at. The RFP that you created is both illegal and invalid. By including the recycle collection service in the RFP, this interloc agreement, you are legally obligated to ensure not merely encourage but participation by minority-owned veterans and veteran-owned businesses. This needs to be corrected immediately, and we should benefit from every commercial container, program, residential, and other font tied. Now, here's the meat of my meeting. I would like to know, not to know, I would like to... For all federal funding and state funding that the county has received, I don't want every funding. I want to know the, I'm gonna say, the paperwork that they send to the state and federal government of how that these federal programs are operated. I know that some programs is not operated in the event for, and it says language in it for minority or small or veteran-owned businesses, but they do have something in these grants that we don't know what in the hell is going on with all of these grants that we're getting, that you're getting. We don't know. So I'm asking this commission, if I gotta pay for it, I don't mind paying for it. But we would like to know what each department that have, that receive federal government, from federal and state government money from each department, we would like to see that mythology, and we would also like to see what are they sending to the federal and state government for those contractual agreements?
Okay, so that would be a public records request?
Yes, ma'am.
And we'll be happy to have that put into FOIA, and we can get you a cost estimate for getting all that information to you.
Mr. Rigby?
Yes, ma'am.
Susan Prado, Deputy County Attorney. If you stop by my office at the end of this meeting, I'm very happy to help you with your request.
I would do that. Here's my last thing that I'm gonna say, and I'm gonna take my seat. Now, you do have a recycling program, I write. And that recycling program, if I, and I'm reading from, I'm reading from, and I'm gonna take my seat when I say this. I'm reading for guidelines for grant compliance. Now, this is what it says, and I'm gonna take my seat. It says, "All universal trash, commercial, and natural gas production collections include an RFP for recycling services." In that case, the contract policy should allow disabled veterans and minority-owned businesses to participate. Here's the county that always tells us that you encourage participation. That's a major word that we hear all the time, that, "Well, we encourage participation." And I think the last time that I was in one of the meetings, that's what it said. It always say, "Encourage." But this says that if you're receiving, which the recycling program does receive state and federal funds, because the last time I was here, I heard this weird director say that he just got a grant for $52,000 from the state, if my recollection serves me correctly. So I'm saying here is that if the recycling program that you're receiving federal and state dollars for, here's what it says. Veterans and minority-owned businesses should receive funding from all revenue streams. So I'm asking is that why are we not receiving revenue funding from these projects? And if it says that we're supposed to receive it, then why are we not receiving it? What is the problem? What is going on? I don't know what, I'm saying to myself, is this discriminatory practice? And I know you don't like to hear that word. Is it because that when we coming for you, the answer is always no for whatever it is? But I'm looking at other things, when people come up and you don't say no? For 22 years, past and present, Commissioners have always told us no. And you don't have to believe me, go back and check the record. It's always no. We just wanna know why. What have we done for everybody, for everything? We coming for you, it's a no. And sometimes when I come up here, I'm gonna say this, and I'm gonna take my seat. All I see sometimes is what? Moses and Pharaoh, and I see David, ain't gonna lie you. That you hide your hearts and not look at the totality of the situation, but just tell us no. And then you say, "Encourage participation." But I will be back again because...
All right.
Ma'am?
I said, "Oh..."
I'll be back again because I know you feel today that I'm jumping all over the board, but I'm not. I did this today because I wanted somebody to be part of the records.
Okay.
All right?
All right.
But I will be back again.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rigby. We look forward to seeing you again. All right, with that, we will move on to county attorneys' matters. First item is resolution for a special assessment providing for the replacement of culverts for Waters Edge Phase 2 subdivision.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning again. We are here asking for the resolution for the special assessment for the Waters Edge Platte 2, which is the Waters Edge Phase 2 subdivision. And if you recall, in June, the commission approved a contract with Tim Rose Contracting to replace the culverts. And part of this, it starts back in really 2006 when the subdivision was started, and then the county agreed to take over the roads from their private roads, and we agreed to take them over. However, that did not include any of the drainage or any of the other sections of the platte that were included on that. Since then, unfortunately, as metal pipes do, they've corroded, and they've started falling in, and they're gonna have problems. And so the county has agreed, after speaking with the homeowners association, over, of course, I believe, looking back over the course of three or four years, maybe even a little longer than that, to, they've agreed to pay the lion's share of the cost. They got an estimate that it was 1.3 million. The county has agreed to cover $827,000 of that, with the residents being responsible for $537,974.50. That includes an $80,000 reserve account for the residents, and actually, the county's covering $100,000 in their portion as well. We are asking that the commission this morning approve the first of three special assessment hearing notices or resolutions that we need to have in order to complete this. The first one would then require us to have an equalizing board to see if anybody should pay a little less or a little more. The current cost, as estimated, is $417 per year, per house, per lot, and that would be over 15 years, which would pay the total that each homeowner would owe is $6,255.52. The next hearing would be a hearing in which they're allowed to come in and ask for lessening because maybe a property's smaller, property, something of that. That's with the equalizing board, and then we would come back again as soon as the contract is over. And then hopefully, we don't use those reserve accounts, and they can all get a refund, and everybody pay less, including the county. That's the goal, and that's one of the reasons the County Commission agreed to get the contract, get everything set and in place before actually getting the special assessment so costs didn't go up, because we all know the longer you wait, never goes down. And on that, we got an update yesterday from Rose Contracting that the culverts were ordered this summer. They will be here beginning of December. And so they plan on getting to work just before that so they can set up and have everything ready and get it done as soon as possible. So that's the most current contractor information we have on that.
All right, Commissioners, questions, comments, concerns?
Madam Chair, I just want to thank Chris and Susan. This has been a process that's been well over two years, and it evolved around sinkholes that were at the beginning of the entrance of the subdivision. So it's glad to see some progress finally being made. Thank you.
Fantastic. Yes, Commissioner Moss?
Is this setting a precedent of any kind? I think there are probably other places with this concern.
My understanding is it's not, it's already precedent's been set because there are many times where we'll agree to help work on paving roads, roads that have potholes and those things, and we usually cover between 60 and 66% of the cost, and that's just kind of the pattern that's been happening. And so it's not anything new. It's, and that's, because unfortunately, for the residents to pay for that, it would be thousands of dollars a year. And they might not ever be able to do it, or it'd be crippling for them with already high taxes and already high, well, not taxes, but already high insurance and everything else they have to pay. And so it's pretty standard practice, from my understanding, from looking at the recent history, is we do it all the time for roads, where it may be a private road, we agree to take it over and agree to cover a good portion of the cost to make it palatable because everybody already has so many expenses that if we're able to help offset those, we try to.
Well, then, is there something we should do in the future to prevent it coming to this point?
I don't know that there's anything we could do because they're private roads. And so we don't know to take over, or we don't know to help until somebody comes to us and says we need help or we're willing to give the roads over to the county. I know in the past, there's been, this in 2006, the county agreed to take over the roads as long as the original subdivision agreed to fix everything that was wrong with them at the time. And then the county took approval of those and the maintenance from there forward. But that only included the roads, not the culverts and the easements, because those do go over Indian River Farms water district canals, and so that's an entirely different section of the platte and permitting and everything we have to do to work with Indian River Farms.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Ms. Prado. So, yeah, just, that is a precedent, and it is, as far as answering if we can do anything, they are privately maintained roads. So we really don't, before they come to us, we really don't have anything to do with that just until, you know, they ask, and then if they do make an ask, as Chris alluded to, past president has always been, we make them bring up the roads to county code prior to us accepting to take the maintenance. So, and that's been kind of what it's been for the past, I don't know. You said '06, even maybe perhaps before then. So I think it's just keeping with it.
All right. Other questions, comments, or concerns?
And once again, this is one of three presentations or hearings, and we will have an opportunity to hear from the citizens as well at the next meeting.
Yes, and the next one has to be publicly noticed for that purpose so they can come in, any individual landowner can come in and make a case for why they should pay less. They could make a case for paying more, but I don't expect that to be anybody's intention.
Notification and all, it's close to December?
Yes, sir.
And that's when the project will...
It'll be started, and they're planning on phasing it so they can do it all at the same time as opposed to moving equipment. They wanted to have all the equipment and materials in process and in place because unfortunately, those, the box culverts take at least 120 days. And I think it's taken 140 or so is what the projected is right now, so...
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, so we need a motion to approve the...
The resolution.
Resolution.
First resolution.
Madam Chair, move approval for the resolution.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, Commissioners, this brings us to our last item, which is my item, which is a proposed proclamation policy. We have, as you guys know, when we cut back on meetings, we've had a lot of proclamations that we're jamming into smaller meeting times, which takes up a lot of time at the beginning of the meeting. Not that proclamations aren't worthy, I don't mean that, but I know there's been some frustration on everybody's part. And our policy doesn't really spell out timeframes and things like that. So in an effort to kind of incorporate some of the comments that I've heard, I have included in here what our current policy is and then a proposed tweaking of that policy. I got some input from Martin in St. Lucie County and what they do. Brevard County actually doesn't do proclamations at all, so that was kind of interesting. So generally, not, I'll just kind of hit the bigger changes. It kind of lays out what our process would be. It does require that the request must have contact information, the titles and names of the people that will be accepting the proclamation, and... of the people that will be accepting the proclamation, and those types of things. That way, when we are posting that, we have that information. That's been a little bit of a struggle. It also asks them to create, or give us a sample proclamation or a similar proclamation issued by somebody else. We have been asked in the past to basically find all the information and create proclamations for people, which is very onerous on staff when we are not the experts in that field of what they're trying to proclaim. It also says that proclamations may be read at the board, or may be read somewhere else, or may just be mailed. It lists what proclamations can be issued for, pretty much the same stuff that we do now. I think the biggest change would be proclamations can be issued for an Indian River County employee retiring with twenty-five or more years of service. And then most of the counties also had a certificate of recognition, which is created in this new policy, and that is for things that are very important, that we want to recognize as a group, but maybe doesn't rise to the level of being read at a meeting, but that we want to acknowledge. So for that, that would be Indian River County employees retiring with less than twenty-five years of service, and constitutional office employee retirements of any tenure, and some other charitable fundraising campaigns. I know we get proclamations for those and that type of thing. So it also lays out that proclamation requests need to be to us a minimum of thirty days before they're being requested, and that they need to allow seven business days for that request to be reviewed, because what happens now is we'll get a request for a proclamation like three days before the agenda deadline. And, you know, when we're trying to, it does lay out in here that we try to limit them to three proclamations per meeting. That can cause some problems. So I think most people know when their proclamation needs to be, and this just kind of lays out the expectation to get it to us in a timely fashion, so we can go ahead and process it. I am completely open to any input, questions or concerns on that, and what I would like is whatever we decide to ask the county attorney to put it into proper form, legal and grammatical, because my form is not necessarily that. So it matches whatever our normal form for policies is. So with that, I will, what do you guys think? Thoughts, comments, changes, no changes? We're happy with how it is? This looks good? What do you guys think?
Madam Chair, it does, would this also give us flexibility for like an impromptu proclamation that if something significant happened, we could slide that in?
Yes, for sure. It does mirror our current proclamation and state in several different places that basically proclamations are issued at the discretion of the chair. So the chair always has the ability to deviate or insert if something hap, like if something happened tomorrow, Commissioner Fleischer, you know, saved, saved the world, then we could definitely put in a proclamation.
I would try.
It is possible. I don't think, I don't doubt that you couldn't do it. I mean, I, I'm waiting.
With this team, we could do it.
But it would give us that flexibility, yes, sir.
And also, if there's greater than three that come in, it's the chair's authority to discern which three are read?
Right. It does say typically the BOCC considers no more than three proclamations per meeting. The number of issued proclamations considered will be at the discretion of the chair. So it gives that flexibility. I just tried to kind of lay it out so we had a base, but still allow, so we're not being, you know, ogres or anything.
Recognition still can be recognized here?
Well, proclamations would be issued, so proclamations would be as far as employee retirement, is that what you're talking about?
Like if somebody has twenty-four years of service, do they, I mean, do they get a recognition here in front of us?
They would get a certificate of recognition.
Here in front of us? Yes, no?
Certificate of recognitions would not, would not be read at the, at the meeting. They would be sent, you know, but again, it's at the discretion of the chair. So let's see where it's in here, I'm sorry. And that was just?
Did you copy that?
Let's see. Individual accomplishments of local significance, letters of recognition, blah, blah, blah. Where did I put it in here? I mean, that we, that's open for y'all's discussion. My thought was, letters of recognition is a good way to congratulate things that, that are worthy of congratulatory, of congratulations for sure, but it would help kind of, there's gonna have to be a line somewhere.
No, I agree, but I think, I think some things would, you know, somebody does something heroic or whatever, somebody, you know.
Well, acts of heroism, we can.
And they want to be recognized, it should probably be recognized before the board, just like the, the Little League team that won the state championship. I mean, you know, they should, they don't necessarily deserve, maybe, I don't know if, well, you're putting it in proclamation, but a recognition would probably be proper.
Well, if you want to move acts of heroism, which is under certificate of recognition, to proclamations, we can certainly do that. Would you, is that what you're indicating? Yeah?
Yeah, I mean, you know, here.
I would, I would agree, because.
So we'll move acts of, acts of heroism to proclamations.
And special honors, which is underneath that, and extraordinary achievements, I don't know, those, those three.
Well, there is commemoration, under proclamation, commemoration of a special, of specific accomplishments, time periods, or events that impacts a large number of Indian River County residents is already included under proclamations.
Okay, I'm looking at a certificate of recognition, or congratulatory letter may be issued for the following. It's on page three ninety-four. Acts of heroism, special honors, and recognition and celebration of extraordinary achievements. So those are the three.
What I was intending there was like Eagle Scouts. That is, that is a special honor or an extraordinary achievement, but we don't typically do a proclamation at a meeting for those. That would be something that might be more appropriate for a certificate of recognition that then the chair takes to those, to those ceremonies.
I was thinking more of what the, an act of heroism or special honors, if someone saves someone's life, for example.
Okay, well, I can certainly understand that. So that would be an act of heroism, and we have done those as proclamations or presentations here, so we can move that.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I think historically, you know, we've done countless Eagle Scout presentations there. I can't recall the last time we've done one here. It's done at the ceremony.
Ceremony.
And perhaps there is a lot more room for that as well. Recently did one at, at a church, and it was well received, and they weren't looking for the public affirmation. There are some proclamations that we want to have publicly acclaimed, like today's, for example. I, I think in the spirit of awareness, so I like the idea of that latitude.
Mm-hmm, for sure. And I, my, my goal was with creating a certificate of recognition, it's not just like a certificate of award, like it could be a nice certificate similar to a proclamation in form, but it's something that would then be not necessarily read here, but taken somewhere else to those events, and we get requests for those, and it kind of keeps proclamations under things that are read here, and then certificates of recognition. It's not that it's on a lower level, it just gives us another option to kind of help streamline the process.
Madam Chair, thank you for looking in several different directions with this and, and collaborating to a point where we do have a far better definition for the proclamations. Once again, when we shifted down to two meetings, I think there was times where we had six and seven at a clip, and I don't think the public needs to have an hour and a half of presentation of proclamations. Although each one is very important in its own right, it gets abundantly apparent that it's about the proclamations.
Just, you know, personally, I mean, I don't mind it, because I think it generates goodwill and also strengthened sense of community. So I know it's gone a little over long at times, I mean, maybe each of us could make an effort to, you know, to streamline our comments, but I, I think the individuals, the individual proclamations that recognize different events and different organizations, I think, I just, I think it adds to the richness of the community.
Well, and those things would still be included in proclamations, and the goal, again, is not to, right now, the only option that people have for any kind of board recognition is a proclamation. So this creates multiple avenues to achieve recognition from the board, and it gives us flexibility. If there is something going on in the community that we want, like Commissioner Lauer and the, and the Little League guys, or whatever, to have the ability to do that and kind of lay that out. So it's not that we don't want to recognize, and I want everybody to be clear, that was not the goal. The goal was to give us more flexibility and options in how we are able to recognize those things. And it would not really impact what we are currently proclaiming, but give other avenues for the same level of, of recognition.
Okay.
Madam Chair, move approval with word smoothing by the attorney's office.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Lauer with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. If there's no further discussion, yes.
You move, you're gonna move?
We'll move acts of.
Extraordinary achievements and acts of heroism.
Acts of heroism, yes.
And it's still up to the discretion of the chairman if they want somebody to come to the meeting or something like that?
Correct. All right. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And before we recess, I just want to remind everybody that there is a one-thirty press conference regarding Hurricane Milton shelter, general population shelters were open today at two. Special needs shelter will open tomorrow at eight-thirty a.m. Please stay tuned to our website, there is a link for status updates and information regarding Hurricane Milton, and, you know, now is the time to prepare. And if you are, if you do lose power and need a generator, please practice generator safety, operating that in a well-ventilated area, and, you know, people do not need to be out doing crazy things in hurricanes. Please, just everybody be safe and exercise good decision-making, please.
Prepare, take heat, and be safe.
Correct. All right, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we stand adjourned.